Well, let's go ahead and call our meeting to order. Everyone in attendance, mine is Anna. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll approve the agenda. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And everybody had an opportunity to read the minutes. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
Second. All in favor? All right. All right, so we are... We don't have a presentation today, so we can move straight on to our old business. All right.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is the commission. His own change 23-5 for 1150 McCoy went through the city commission last week. On the 13th, just this last Tuesday. On the consent agenda with no issues. So that's done. That makes like the sixth or seventh, right? Or just about almost half a dozen when we first brought this issue of the ag zone being kind of non-conforming to a lot of the areas. This property actually is about an acre or two, even close to two acres. Mr. Hutchins, Randy was here for... We have a very small corn, but we have the corn. You called it a big grass. He got that through. And again, even though he had a large property, that the R1 dimensions is what was attractive to him to change the zone. And again, the assurance that you could still have all the elements you want and need. And he built in a shock out of that, that kind of the zone change he did. But, you know, $260 popped in having people that were telling, we're looking, we're going to change this broadly throughout the city. But we're being very careful. And I'll get into some other issues that have popped up. We continue to march towards that end of changing the rules of the link. But these half a dozen so applicants felt they wanted to get it done now, and so they paid the fee and we all been ready about it. The second thing, if there's any questions on that, you guys. Number two, I guess, we had a workshop with the city commission on the 23rd, I think, of January or 24th. You, David, were present and Anna Evers was there. We sat around the table with the commission at five o'clock, an hour before the regular meeting, to have this workshop. And Jerita, my office, was there, myself. And I thought it went very well. I mean, David, I'd like you to talk about it, but out of that, we did get some feedback from the commission. I think one of the biggest things we got from the commission was a lot of things they just didn't know was in there. And some of the things that you brought up particularly, especially the, I guess, provision of having signs on cars, right? Or that just doesn't make sense, right? With the Domino's driver, real estate, you know? Anybody who's in the business for themselves has signs on their cars. And that was one of the biggest things that, for them, they were like, well, you know, it's a no-brainer, let's take it out. So on one hand, it was kind of educational where they really... And that was kind of the whole purpose of that workshop was to kind of just get them to understand what's in there, what we're looking at, what you came up with, and when you kind of rewrote the code. And so, in that regard, I thought it was very beneficial. Ken George, who's the mayor pro temp, took an interest to take the coding and go through it himself and provide some feedback. I haven't heard back from him yet, but of the commissioners, you've got three that read everything and that really kind of are engaged. And you've got two that are just real busy and they're just not as much. So Ken and the mayor is definitely one of those three that can, where they do read quite a bit into stuff and provide feedback. But David, do you want to talk more about how you felt about it?
Well, I think that, you know, the meeting that we had with them, it was, I think they received it well. I think it seemed at first they were kind of like, why are we doing this? You know, they were kind of a little... It seemed to me that they were a little apprehensive that we were just going to try to just change some stuff on them without them really knowing it. And I think that came through as they would like to be more involved on the front end when changes like that happen. So that I got, I got that from them. But, you know, the current sign code, and we did make some changes. We made changes recently with the pennants, and that has helped. But as you mentioned, you know, and I think just going through that old sign code and reading some of that stuff, it didn't make sense. It's very... And what I expressed to them was, you know, a person coming into the city of Aztec, starting a business, it is, it is hard for the business owner to be able to kind of navigate through that whole process. And, you know, it doesn't make sense. I mean, it's hard, it's hard. I know that Jerita understands it, and I know that you understand it, but, you know, people like Ram signs or San Juan signs, they understand it and they're able to do what they need to do. But if you're just trying to make sense of it, it's hard to understand. So we tried to, we tried to come up with some kind of easier understanding of what it is, so I think...
Yeah, and then, you know, the timeframe after that, and this workshop was called by, primarily by Mayor Pro Temp George. He said, you know, we need to get this sign code done and see what you guys do. When we passed the pennant signs and added the P and Z into the appeal process, that's what I commented, in that, you know, we need to be more involved. And so, and I think the mayor kind of came to our, you know, to our back and said, well, this is why we have the P and Z, because they're hashing this out. So let's have them present to us on what this, you know, this workshop, where it's at, so we can give our two cents where we're... So the next step was, for the next meeting, which is the 27th of this month, the commission meeting was, we were going to present to them on these changes that we all came up with, that Jerita really has done the needed work on. And it was really important. I'm really glad that she chimed in and really kind of ran the meeting in terms of what changes are what and why. Because if she doesn't understand it and has some issues with it, how are you going to communicate that to the applicant? And there are some definite confusing factors that we've all expressed in the code that I think we're hashing out and that she's definitely hashed out, that, you know, that's come to light. So those changes, and we'll go through these changes here in a minute, but the 27th, we are, for the next commission meeting, we're going to present to them and not have a workshop, but just a presentation on this is what we did. And ask for their direction on, okay, do you want us to now, the next meeting, start the ordinance amendment process, which would be an attempt to adopt an amended ordinance to add these changes and then wait them on and do the final adoption and so forth. Well, that agenda is already in build. We already have a presentation from some, I think, the San Juan Historic Society or something like that. There's already a workshop we're getting the budget process for the year. So I talked to Jeff, and again, I haven't heard back from Mayor Pro Temp, so we're not going to do that on the 27th. And so, and it just kind of gives us more time, you know? So the following meeting, which is March 13th or March 12th, we are, I met with the city manager and said, you know, put us on it for presentation then, and we'll provide them with the findings and ask for direction. So I think the biggest thing is this chart that we came up with, this matrix that Jerita came up with and made her team do. So let me turn it over to Jerita, I think, right? She can talk about some, a lot of the changes that we have in the red lines and especially when it gets to that chart.
Were you guys able to read through it and kind of look and see?
Something of it.
Easier and quicker. So you saw, I just, the red line, I was just going to start out and show you. The red line, when we got down to the area where it starts talking about the chart and everything, it just got to where I was redlining everything and trying to figure out where to put it. And it got very difficult, very quick. So Ed helped us do this chart that we talked about. Did you guys see that chart? Does it, does it make it easier? Do you think it's pretty easy for anyone to be able to look and see what kind of sign they can have?
Yeah, and this eliminated how many pages of stuff?
Quite a bit of stuff.
Because, I mean, before that, you had my whole page on, and then you had to kind of flip that. You had all that, basically.
And then it went down to all this. So Ed was a lot of help to me, trying to figure that out and trying to figure out the best way to do this for the commission and for you guys. And Ed finally said to me, Jerita, you have so much red light, why don't you take it and just start over? So that's what the second one is. So I went in, did all the changes that we already had in the red line. The one thing I did want to mention about the vehicle, let you guys give me some feedback as to what you think of what I did. Where it talked about, basically it said no one could have a sign on a vehicle.
Yeah.
I changed it to this number four here. Signs placed on or painted on a motor vehicle or trailer parked with the primary purpose of providing signage outside a business, not otherwise allowed by the sign code. So otherwise, if you have a business and they want to just have a rolling sign and that's how they advertise their business in front of their business, I don't think we want to let them do that. But what do y'all think? We're going to take it out?
I think if we do that, because I know we're talking about probably one trailer, that, I know that that was one of the commissioners that, or someone had said about the trailer.
Which trailer?
But over by...
Aztec rent?
Aztec rent, yeah. That was, that was the one that they were talking about. I am assuming that, it appeared to me that that's what they were talking about. But what's the difference of them and U-Haul? Because a U-Haul truck says U-Haul on it, and if we're going to go after that trailer, then we're going to have to go after U-Haul. So I think we should, personally, I think we should just remove it.
And where it gets to, forgive me, I will give you...
No, go ahead.
Is how it looks. Because the Aztec wreck looks like it's spray painted on, it just doesn't really look professional. And I think we need to add, you know, the common language is workmanlike or professional sign, like U-Haul is.
Yeah.
You look at something like that, though, in some instances, that's the new thing, is making it look like graffiti type.
And it's art?
It's art.
And we really can't get into...
No, we can't, we can't.
But you start, you open up a can of worms like no other.
Yeah, because...
What I was trying to say is, if there's a business and they don't have a sign, they can't use a vehicle with a sign to sitting outside their business as their sign. But maybe I just need to...
I mean, I think, I get, I understand where you're coming from.
I don't think we're probably going to have much of that to deal with.
Do we want, and then the...
Do we want to...
The other question is, do we want to have to hassle with that? Because code compliance, you're going to have to go and cite that guy every time.
Yeah.
And then he'll move it.
And that's why we have him here today.
And then he'll move the trailer, right? I mean, he'll move it. He'll be out of place for a while, and then it comes back. And then it's like, so, I don't know.
Take it out.
That's my personal opinion. I mean, I don't know.
Or we can make it simpler, too, and just say, I mean, however you want to word it, but we can use a sign on a vehicle or a movable object in the place of a sign on a building.
And in addition to...
Right.
And I don't really know that we have that so much.
Right, we don't have, I mean, if you're like Ramsey Realty, they're a stationary real estate business with a sign, and then they may slap a sign on their car.
Well, but if I could, the barbecue place over here, the good barbecue place over at the, was it the Vanilla Moose? They're a trailer, and they have their advertising on the trailer.
Yeah, we're fine with that.
But I think they also have their permanent sign, their pylon sign.
Do you have one?
The big Vanilla Moose, yeah.
Oh, the barbecue.
The barbecue.
The barbecue wagon?
Well, right.
And underneath that Vanilla Moose, they do have the San Juan barbecue sign, that's what it's called.
Is it on there? I hadn't noticed it.
It was a, it was a sandwich board, right, that I had saw.
They have a sandwich sign out there.
That's what I saw.
They're looking more and more permanent, you know, to get off.
They're busy.
But that's a great example of, you know, where we probably don't want to even...
I would say, but I...
And I will get comments like Bakersfield, a lot of comments on their graffiti or how they put on their building, and it's from my own life, you know? It's like, well, I don't really know what we could do about it, you know? I mean, it's, you know, it's...
Oh, which one?
On the Bakersfield, the old Bakersfield right here on Main Street.
Main Street, the B Street?
Yeah.
Oh, right here on the corner of Blanca and Main.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, and then where we kind of tackle that in the future is, when we have specific design standards for Main Street, which we will have as we become a Main Street community, that section will have its own types of signs and criteria for it, but, you know, that'll just be for them. But I think, to get back on here, I think we just take it out. It's very difficult to enforce, if that's what you guys...
Yeah, I mean, yeah, either take it out or just make it simpler.
I'm good with taking it out.
Because it'll still be a permit for a sign. And then after that, you know, if you want to get a magnet to put on your car, you know, or something, then so be it.
So then, measurement standards is where we went that I think there was a lot of confusion. Do you think that I made this easier? I just am seeing this, I need to fix this. Kind of weird how it... I'll move the writing down below those pictures.
So one of the things on that, if you, I don't know if that's where that's in there, that what we meant, we took out, some of the criteria was like 20% of a building we saw or something like that.
Right.
And so much percentage of the overall square footage, right, of the building. And so, where is that?
Building frontage only.
So we just took out where it had the square footage, we thought, right? We just thought that was...
Where it was the percentage of the square footage of the building, it just didn't make sense. There was too much to calculate.
Yeah.
And I think that one was for the corner, right? If the building was on a corner?
No, it was, it was for any building. It could be off of the frontage or the square footage in it, a certain percent of the square footage in it. It just, it really didn't make sense the way it was worth it.
Yeah, it was like an EDA war. So we have the criteria for the frontage of a building, like the wall.
Whichever of them.
20%?
Yeah.
Smallest.
And then it said, or the percentage of the overall square footage of the building, which like, well...
Whichever was smallest.
And the way I understood that, or I thought it, what I thought I was reading, was that if it was a building on a corner, like Main and, what is it? Chaco, right? You know, they have, they have that flower shop, for instance. So they're on, they have the, they have the frontage on Main, and then they have frontage on Chaco. My understanding was that the 20% of the, on Main, and then the square footage for the whole thing because of what they have on Chaco. So then they could increase their sign by that amount. That was my understanding of it, but...
Well, and we kind of left that in there for almost like a double front. So it'd be 20% for each front.
So, so that'll probably, yeah, that'll work out.
Because it basically both walls.
Yes, they can put one on each wall if they wanted to, or...
Yeah, and then we just thought the square footage, is that what it's up there?
Oh, this is the old one, yeah.
I've looked at this so many times, it's hard to go find it.
Yeah, I think, I think the 20%, I think it's good the way that it is, the new part, 20% of the frontage of the facade.
Right there.
I tried to just make it easier. So did it make sense to you, David, what I put in there now?
It did.
Okay.
That part did, yes. The table did?
Okay.
Because then you can find, if you're...
There's that piece that addresses, you go back right there, primary and secondary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that addresses what you were talking about.
Yeah, basically the primary part, you know, the building tenants. You know, an example is the Aztec restaurant, they just put a big mural on that. And that didn't come through our office. It was the city commissioner who spearheaded that whole thing, talked about it, bragged about it, and I was like, yeah, I never pulled a permit for that, you know? And it's great, we never raised an issue, but I kind of, in sidebar conversations, you know? They have a sign code, and he's one of the ones that's like, we need to change the sign code. It's like, well, you can go buy the one we have, you know? So it's like, and that mural is pretty much, that's more than 20%.
Is that the front part? I guess I haven't even known.
It's on this side, yeah.
It's on this side?
Yeah.
Aztec restaurant, it's on the side.
On the east side of it?
Yeah.
I'd never noticed.
It looks nice, and I mean, it's like...
And even Aztec Hardware, the old Aztec Hardware now, it's, you know, that...
That buckle is amazing.
That, that...
But that, that's a buckle.
That's, that's bigger than it's supposed to be, too, by the sign code.
And then you get into murals, it's totally separate than signage, because it's a mural. It's not really advertising anything, it's just public art, and so...
And the way they got away with that without a permit is because it's not advertising.
Yeah, so, but...
Anything that would advertise would have to come through us.
So that's where, you know, that's where we, which is, in the code, where we have to differentiate between murals and signs. So, but, you know, and that, that's again, where in office, we need to understand if someone's going to paint a mural, they just go and do it, and it's public art, and, you know, we need to see it after.
Because in our definitions, it says a mural is a sign only if it is related by language, logo, or pictorial depiction to be the advertisement of any product or service or the identification of any business. So if it has any way advertising a business...
Yeah.
Then it has to come through the sign code. Otherwise, my...
Could be a free-for-all?
It doesn't have to come in.
Yeah, and I had a, really had a really bad issue in another community where they did a mural, and it showed like somebody shooting up, like somebody shooting up, you know, drugs or something like that. It was really very, you know, and it was a huge issue of how do you determine what's appropriate, what's not, you know? And anyway, that's going to be kind of going, and then the two murals we have were really nice, but I just hate to, for the day when we get something that's, there's no checks and balances for those. I think we should at least review them and make sure that it's not, it's going to be appropriate, you know, not something that, after the fact here again, that will be like, hmm, I don't think that's really something that should have been painted, but with my hands of time, I'm...
So when we become a Main Street and the rules change, will those come, be affected, those murals?
Well, they'll, they'll be a part of the design standards that we have. So in Main Street, and I, I'll get to, when I, when I get to updates, to Santa Fe for a Main Street conference, we will be setting up our own design standards, and particularly these signs. And it won't be content, it'll just be kind of a look, a shape of kind of thing, which also includes just a lot of the Main Street. Like if you go Nob Hill or Uptown in Albuquerque or any one of those places, they have their own like lampposts, kind of, that are different than the rest of the city and stuff like that. But earth tone is commonly used in the Main Street overlay zone, where it's like its own zoning, like North Main overlay we have, right? This will be a Main Street overlay zone that has special criteria that it has to be earth toned, or sometimes it goes as far as brick facades or stuff like that, that, you know, we'll, we'll kind of work in there. But, but here again, we still can't affect murals, you know, and what's existing, so... So to answer your question, those will remain, and they will really not say anything.
So do we want to add something in here that the murals have to come through our office?
I think so. I think just as a review of content, I mean...
Just so that they're in good taste.
Yeah, that it's appropriate, it's not, you know, offensive.
Or like the one that was up for the high school, but, and then they, the owners had it taken down, I believe, painted over.
The owners did.
One of the parents...
Right, but if it, if it at least went through some kind of a preview, and they, as I hear the story, they, they said it would be one thing and then it turned into something else.
Yes.
Well, one of the parents just did not give permission for their child to be used in it and did not like driving by, being reminded every day.
And then there was, it was exactly that. There was things added to it that they said that originally wasn't going to be on there. But I do think we need to have some kind of review and criteria, because one of the things that came up in the workshop, too, was how to differentiate between graffiti and art.
Right.
Right? And so, I think clearly, but you guys and I think the commission would understand is if we said, look, you know, no, no displaying of drug use, like someone shooting up heroin, which is what we had in our, the form team I worked in, that spurred this review to come in. And, you know, just stuff that, what we would kind of maybe list as inappropriate, showing violence or showing drug use or showing nudity or something that, that we would typically see as what we believe is appropriate.
Would you spell that out in the code? Does that have to be reviewed?
I think you'd have to have some kind of language in there to protect, or give some guidelines, like illegal activities or something like that, because if not...
I mean, we don't really have, you know, I know there's a lot of art that has nudity and...
Exactly.
Yeah, but definitely drug use.
Which is still illegal.
Somebody's, you know, again, shooting up heroin or something like that. So I do think we do spell out some of those things. Acts of violence, I mean, if I recall from what we ended up writing into that code, there was that language, because that mural had, it was like a violent scene and, you know, drug use. It had all the things that you didn't want in a mural was in that, and so, so, yeah, I think that's...
So would it be reviewed by PMZ, the PMZ board? And then approved by the commission?
Would it have to go that far to be approved by the commission?
Yeah.
They may want to, but really, for a mural, it's not...
I think, excuse me, Peggy, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
No, I think with, I think you'd probably be better off by going plum to the city commission, because if we approve something just like now, with the one commissioner saying, well, why aren't we being included? Why aren't we, you know, upfront with it? So if we, if we made the decision and they did it and they didn't like it, well, guess what? Here they are again, griping and whining that we're not including them.
Well, don't you have counsel, too, on the commission? Or with the commission? That might be our, our ability to regulate that by bouncing it off the, I think, the city attorney.
Right now, everything's set up where like the quasi judicial hearings you guys do, like the zone change. And they, what they like, and I know the mayor is, you know, he's the one that really advocates for this board, but there are a couple that personally have said they could deal without a P and Z, you know? But every one of them appreciate that they don't have to go through that quasi judicial process at a commission meeting. Like this last one, it was on consent and it just passed with everything else, and that was it. So, well... So what we did in that other community is we, and what I'll push for is administrative approval. We have the criteria, just like approving a sign permit, that doesn't need to go through this whole process. You meet the criteria, we sign your permit, and you're on your way. And so initially, that's what I would advocate for is that we write in these certain things that we don't allow in a mural, you know, acts of violence, drug use. And as long as it meets that, and they give us a rendering of what they're going to do, then it's approved and you move on, you know? Because otherwise, you guys would be, you guys would be looking at those same things that we could look at in the office.
Yeah.
And the only other thing is that if, like what happened with that, with the mural, you know, on the side of that building where it didn't turn out to be the way they presented it or they applied in the mural permit for it, if that's the case, then that would come through PZ to have that maybe possibly taken down, you know, something to that effect.
I like that, because you don't want to get too bogged down with every detail going through the...
Yeah, because I mean, as it is, it's like a zone change is a two-month process. We set it up for PZ, and then we have been able to, like today, because we do meet on Thursdays, right? Is usually the Thursday before the Tuesday meeting is the deadline at 10 o'clock in the morning. So 10 o'clock today would have been the deadline to get everything we need for the commission meeting on that next Tuesday. And we've done that. I mean, Jureta literally ran out of here on one of the meetings where we had, I think, a zone change to get it into the agenda for that Tuesday. But otherwise, we wait for the next meeting for the commission.
Does this delay everything?
Yeah, and then you got publishing, you know, 15, so it is kind of a process that we may not need that to go, you know, so. But I'm glad you guys agree that we should probably establish some parameters on murals, you know, that's not really in there. Do we have anything on murals, do we?
Yeah, we do.
Just the definition.
We have the definition.
There's nothing where they have to be approved unless it would be considered a sign, and to be considered a sign, it has to have advertising in it.
Right.
So this will be a review of murals not advertising.
And, you know, I mean, really, I mean, that's kind of pretty ambiguous anyway, because like, if you wanted to get to, I mean, I really haven't paid attention to the sign at Aztec Restaurant, but if there's a table, somebody could say, hey, they're advertising for their restaurant, because there's a table in the picture, right? I mean, people can get kind of sticky on, and they can go way far, I can go way far one way or the other, you know? Blame anybody else, but if I didn't like it, you know what I'm saying? So I think we could put language in there. And we also noted that if there was any, an appeal process, they're going to come back here anyway, right?
Yeah.
So if we were to, that's a good point, if we, at the office there, they came in and they said, you know, this is what we want to put in as a mural, but it doesn't fit your criteria, we deny them, then we would tell them, but you can appeal to the PZ board and bring it to you guys to, if you see a different way or something.
That's good.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Because we have that already, that's how we're going to have it written now, so.
Yeah, right now, we design...
Right now, I have the, they shall review the denial of an applicant's application via quasi judicial hearing process.
Which is like the zone change.
So any application like a zone change, variance, conditional use, and we denied them in office, they get filed to be heard before you guys go through that anyway, so that would be added right in on those orders.
Yeah, and then that way, we don't have to, well, I don't know that we need to put the language in here for mural. Or, I don't know, what do you guys think?
I think you do.
Yeah, it should be.
Yeah, just because...
If we're going to want to review them, we're going to have to add all of that in.
Because that, I mean, especially again, criteria that if someone brings us a mural or somebody's head getting chopped off.
Right.
You know, those types of things that just, you know, especially if they will get a lot of feedback from the committee on, say, how could you put low and paint this when my kids walk right through it or something like that?
And if you don't...
Again, I go back to this other community where it blew up, it's just, and that's exactly what we got. The elementary school dropped off this kids on the bus right there, and there's this big painting of a guy shooting heroin, another one being stabbed, and one of them looked like Jesus with horns, and I mean, it was just a very horrific scene that just went up overnight, you know? So I think having that written in there, that we say, you know, I'm sorry, but this is just not allowed by ordinance, turn away, right then and there. And it also brings, lets people know that if you're going to paint a mural or you're trying to do something, there is some type of, you know, process to it, you know? We may, I don't know, we may or may not charge for it, but we definitely want to see and create this criteria, because eventually that will happen, somebody will just do it, just to do it.
If it's not in writing, it doesn't exist.
Yeah, that's true.
That's true. If you write that, it didn't happen.
So the determining building frontages and footage, frontage length, did that, was that more clear?
Yes, that was...
And then we added the makers, we already talked about that. I was going to try to do a table for all the rest, this stuff down below, but it doesn't work on a table, so...
Just going to remove that.
I left it like, I made some changes on the wording of some of it, as to what was in the old code that gives, you know, more information of what size it can be. Each tenant may have multiple signs, as long as the total wall sign does not exceed 20% of the building facade. Just, because we have to have some guidelines as to sign being, and that's basically what that stuff was.
So let me ask you a question, on that chart...
Chart?
On your chart, is that easy for you to be able to tell the customer, is that easy for you?
Oh, yeah.
Much easier, right? So they come in, they tell you, hey, my building is 100 by...
They're going to tell me, they're going to ask, I'm going to ask them what, we're going to figure out what zone they're in.
Right.
And then they'll tell me what kind of assignment they're wanting. And then I'm going to have to scroll down as to sign being all of that.
So if they tell you the building is this size by this size, and I want a wall sign, you can come over here, C1, this is this size, you can have simple, easy...
That's what's nice about it, by the way, this is how we're going to do the zoning too. Right now, our zoning's not like that.
Right.
We're going to create the same chart factory it already has, where you have, like, just like you have on top of your zoning designation and all the uses, so it's going to be much longer because you have every use of your, God, that's there, right? But it is, because if you are in the C1 zone, and you can see just about every type of sign is allowed there, so that's a good first check, and then like she said, she'll scroll down and say, okay, what size? So we can make sure it fits within that 20% or whatever.
And it's called development standards, but we had, we broke it up for A1, our agricultural residential and office. And then the second part of it is for commercial and manufacturing districts, because they're different. You don't want as big a signs in residential areas as you do for your commercial areas.
Yeah, and in manufacturing, you got a giant warehouse, you know, the same applies to the percentage, 20% of that is...
Pretty huge.
Yeah, so then it fits.
But then, this was a question I had, and Andrew and I kind of have talked about it. In the old sign, it had additional wall signs for multiple-story buildings and just a lot more. I don't know that we need that.
Well, there's a...
That's why I put it in yellow for you guys to discuss.
And I looked at that, and we do have some two-story buildings on Main, and so they're, so if they were, I mean, maybe right now, the second story is a home, but if they decided later it gets sold, it's still C1, right?
Yeah.
So just because they're living in it on the top, it's still C1, so if they wanted to put a business up there, massage parlor, whatever, they should be able to have a sign, right? So I think leave it, that's what I think, but...
Scroll down, because I could just...
Well, do you see what this says though? Each tenant may have multiple wall signs, as long as the total wall sign area does not exceed 20% of the building facade. So if you got a two-story, your facade is bigger.
Yeah, but...
By 10%, right? So you got 20% plus 10%.
I think our building is a good example for vintage mirrors, because right next to us is Jack's Postic is a single-story. So as much as I'd hate, I would never put a sign over that beautiful brick. But if you're driving down Main Street, that's an excellent surface on the side of the building for a sign. And so, you know, that, I could, as a building owner or somebody else, want to use that, even though, and then going south, you've got the old Aztec Plumbing Building with the same side, and so, you know, in office, we consider that almost like a double front as a corner, because that other building just happens to be one story that's next to us, you know? And you could use, and it would be excellent advertising to be able to use that upper-story brick for advertising.
Advertising or mural.
Yeah. For a building with two floors of additional permitted sign area, 20 square feet for each eligible frontage, this additional permitted sign area may be increased by 10 feet.
10 feet, yeah.
For each additional building floor. So that gets a little confusing, right? But basically, you, like you said, you have...
But the thing of it is, in like downtown with the two, the second story, the front portion, they may have signs on their windows, because there's not really walls per se there, there's windows. But the upper floor, they could put a sign above. I think...
Yeah, we have like a banner sign, that, again, that relates, because we have this like metal that can look like pillars, but you can't really put signs on, but we do on the windows. But that whole side, when the brick is, is perfect for it. You know, the other buildings are on corners.
Right.
But they're two-story, like, you know, except the flower shop, so, you know, I think we'd simplify it, but it should be allowed, because it's...
I think it should be for each floor.
Yeah.
I think that would simplify it.
You know, if we take it out, we're taking it out because we don't have anybody in there right now in a business, and then they're going to come, and then we're like, okay, now we're going to have to...
Yeah, otherwise now, you know, if they come back and say, yeah, I want to put a sign on my upper floor, we say, well, because we took it out, it's not allowed.
Right. Then we've got to start this process again.
So we're saying that they can have, additional sign area is permitted on each of the building's primary and secondary frontages according to the following. For a building with two floors, the additional permitted sign is 20 square feet for each eligible frontage.
So that was determined, now maybe change that for each eligible floor.
And I, yeah.
You have side...
And I would...
The next says, increase 10 square feet for each building floor.
And maybe for...
To me, this was very confusing, I was like, what do we do with this?
And to make it, maybe to simplify it, is note in there that if there is a business on second floor, this is the sign they can have, because the way, I get what you're saying, because what it says right there is, vintage mirror can have a sign 20% because it's on the ground floor, but because they own the top, because the same owner owns the top, they could put a same-size sign on the top floor too. So maybe we need to note that it's per business.
And on the side.
Right.
Because the side is not, is exposed.
Right.
Because you have...
So that second floor needs to be, we need to notate that it's a business.
And again, I think the Aztec Plumbing in that, in our building is probably the only two that I can think of.
Maybe the new one, the new one down there.
The two-story on the corner.
But it's on the corner.
See, it could be...
That doesn't like, because it's on...
Yep.
Yeah, so...
It's two-story, but it could have it on the front edge as well as on...
Yes.
So I think just to simplify, if you have 20% of your surface on the second floor, you know, it's, and it's pretty, it's implied that the second floor could use is advertising, because you can see it.
Right.
So, you know, if there was the old Peter Clay building that's smashed between two-story buildings, it wouldn't apply, because you don't have a sign.
Right.
So does number one cover that for the, for a building with two floors, the permitted sign area is 20 square feet for each eligible frontage?
Or each eligible business.
For each eligible floor, because you don't have, I'm not talking about just two-story frontage. You've got side...
Right.
Advertising space also.
And this, and what we're talking about is one sign per business, right? So if there's two businesses, that's why they're getting that sign on the second floor, because they've moved the business to the second floor. So this business on the single, on the ground floor couldn't have two signs, shouldn't have two signs.
Yeah, because otherwise, what will happen is you'll have a business who goes, oh, I've got two floors, I have tenants up above, so they take that extra space, and somebody comes in and buys or rents out that upper floor, puts in a business, and now they can't put up a sign, because the footage is maxed out. So it needs to be per business.
I agree with that too.
So that the newcomer in five, 10 years can go and actually put a sign up without fighting the guy downstairs.
Yeah.
But then won't you have to change like on the corner, won't you have to change that for the single-floor businesses? That are on the corner, because you're figuring...
Because like, just like the flower shop, if it was upstairs and downstairs, you'd have basically four advertising.
No, but what I'm saying is though, is we're having two different, like a corner building that's single-story, he's got a portion that's on two streets, frontage and the side street, and he could put a percentage on either side, correct?
20% on either side.
Okay, so then, the two-story did...
You have a, you have to figure out a primary sign area and a secondary. The primary sign area is 80%, and the, no, the primary. You can have multiple wall signs, as long as the total wall sign area does not exceed 20% of the building facade.
Right, and that's the main, whatever you choose to be the main.
But you've got facade on both sides, so that counts into both.
So usually, that determines the address. So if it's 103 North Main, that facade is Main Street.
So then, what are you going to do to these people that have already got advertising on the opposite, on the side street that they're on? See what...
Their grandfather...
I think we leave it, leave them alone.
No, and I think we cut...
But that's a good point.
Okay.
I think that's a good point, though.
20%.
I just think there's like kind of a double.
Yeah, and, you know, it does make sense, because if we're going to give them a double for a second story, we probably should give them the double for the side street too, just to make it all the same.
Additional wall sign for the secondary frontage shall be equal to the 80% of the total sign area.
So 80% of your, of the primary sign area, secondary frontage, so that does kind of cover, your secondary frontage would be...
Yeah, that would cover it there, I guess.
We just have to do the math.
Yes.
So 80% of your primary sign area, so your primary sign area is 20% of your wall, and then 80% of that is what your secondary would be, so...
Yeah. Secondary has to be a little smaller than your primary.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly, that's the way it says, so it has to be a little smaller than primary. Your front-facing sign is 32 square feet, your secondary sign would have to be...
24.
24, exactly.
And I may have missed this, but Aztec, Downtown Aztec's kind of a special place. I mean, it's got its own character and everything. So these signs, are they subject for the business, or can they rent them out for somebody else to advertise their business? I'd hate to see billboards come up on Main Street.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, to a building becomes a billboard.
Yeah, no, there's signs, it has to be one.
Okay, okay.
And so, and that's a great point, when we get into the Main Street, the design standards specifically, then we'll even be a little more critical about what goes in down in. Because right now, if you have like a vacant lot, like the Duesenberries where they keep their trailers between the two buildings, they could put a billboard there, signs, you know? I mean, they could apply for one, and so we want to limit, they wouldn't, but it's just, we definitely want to not, we not allow that. And so we, we want to limit, they wouldn't, but it's just, we definitely want to not, we not allow that.
They might want to put Pioneer Heart sign on this.
Let's re, re-screen it sometime.
Yeah, and seriously, that downtown is such a cool area, I'd hate to see it become a billboard.
Yeah.
Andrew and I will work together and redo this portion then yellow.
Okay.
And, um, I think that was everything that I kind of was questioning, unless you guys have found anything that you thought we need to talk about and change?
There was one thing I wanted to bring up.
Okay.
Under the pro, prohibited signs, it says banners.
Oh, does it?
Yeah.
Oh, that might be the old one, huh?
20-2-6.
Yeah, it's towards the top. Right there.
The billboards are prohibited.
Under three, animated tethering balloons, banners.
Let's see, we'll strike that.
So.
Yeah, that's gotta go.
Either strike it or define it.
Well, we already changed that.
Yeah, that's all right.
Because we already allow it.
Well, ban, no, we allow pennants. So.
What you're reading there as well, exposed light bulbs or strings of lights, not permanently mounted, the rigid background, I mean, you're gonna have to get onto Vanilla Moose in the summertime when they, they have their little string of lights.
We did say.
Christmas lights are okay.
Yeah, I mean.
Light throw day is said that, that in a portion of the code.
So mounted to rigid background would be like the Aztec, the Aztec Theater? That would be good.
Because that's on a metal base.
Yeah, so we just, I think there you just want to prevent from somebody using Christmas lights here around. Where they just kind of, or they try to create a sign out of that. But banners, I mean, we did, we did improve, uh, pennants. You see a lot of people, uh, Main Street, so on Main, they had a banner sign for a while. Here again, we have a banner sign.
Banner considered temporary signs, I think.
Motor Vehicle Department had one for a while.
For like fall festival.
And those are temporary signs.
Right.
You cannot, but you cannot have a banner sign as.
As your permanent sign.
A permanent sign, that's why it's in there.
Prohibiting for a permanent sign.
Okay.
But you can have them as temporary signage.
Okay.
Not to change the subject, but four, were, were we talking about that just a bit ago?
Yeah, I'm gonna take it out.
You're gonna take it out?
Yeah, I'm taking it out.
Okay.
Did anybody have anything else? And the reason we don't allow them to have banner signs as their permanent sign is they become looking tacky too fast.
Right.
So that's just as a permanent sign, it does go on down into temporary signs and cover those. So, did you guys see the red it out that I did in definitions? The red line? What I did is I have a way to search our code online. And I went through all of the definitions and I searched, and if it was not in our code, I redlined it to take it out. Why do we define it if it's not in our code?
Yeah, good point.
But I didn't know if you guys, if any of those you felt still needed defined, or if it was good to take them out.
Go back, go back, go, go right underneath the old stuff right there a minute, I want to do alteration. Okay. I was gonna say, I, I misread that first time, I was gonna say, well, Subway just went through a change on theirs.
Yeah.
And it was permitted, it was permitted.
And that's a good example, it's someone's size, they, I mean, they give us a packet and think of what exactly they're gonna do, you know? This really is about making it simpler for the, like you get, you know, your mom and pop or just someone.
For us that don't know anything.
Just want to look at the sign.
I'll say it.
Have we made it, have you made it easier?
I'll say it, I'll, huh?
Have we made it easier?
I think it's easier, it's getting easier, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you think we're good to take it like this with the changes we've talked about today to the commission?
Well, I think you're waiting on Kenneth George's input too, right?
Yeah, and we, you know.
So I'd wait for his, I'd wait for his, whatever he's got.
Yeah, we'll get his, but.
Yeah, and again, so we'll.
This is what we're taking from this.
From us.
Yeah.
So in that same token with what he brings to you, do we get to look at, are we gonna contradict each other?
They might, I want to see what he, you're right, because he might come up with some totally different stuff, and that's why.
It's him, he will.
Taking our time on this because, like you said, I mean, the earliest we go to the commission and it only being informally as a presentation is March 12th and say, this is what we came up with, this is what Commissioner George, and that may change. They may, they may say, we need another workshop, or we probably want, you know, you guys to be involved too, to all.
If we go to that presentation on the 12th and there's a, a lot of conflict, we can bring it back to you guys on the 21st of March.
Because that'll be arguments being, which we could, we could do that. I mean, we got the pressing stuff kind of done, and this is, we're getting there.
Yeah.
Our hope was that, you know, what we presented to them, if they're pretty good with it, and y'all feel comfortable, was if we can, take it back to the, on the 26th as intended off.
Yeah, so.
Well, I think that this is gonna make it easier for them, even with the changes that they're, that they may or may not come up with. Because I, I know for sure that when we had that workshop with them, they were kind of surprised at some of the things that we are, that we did have, you know, in the old co, old code. And I don't remember, someone was, one of them was looking at even an older sign code, right?
That was me.
That was him.
Thank God she caught it, and I was like, what is this here? She goes, what? Who are you looking at?
I don't, it doesn't say that.
Have to like throw everything out in the office.
Yeah, he's got to throw his chapter 26 out too, it's not right.
I forget what it was, but it's like, that's, you know, it was a political, on the political.
Political signs, right? And we came up with the, the date?
We did, that, we, I think we.
60?
I used what, what they said at the commission.
Farmington?
There was a lot of comment on that.
60 days, right? Was that what we had?
I think it was 60 days because they, there was a lot of comment on that.
Yeah.
I remember now, but that's, that's good, we should go over that.
I don't even remember, I've looked at this so many times, my eyes go.
Temporary signs, right?
Was it temporary?
I thought so.
Well, it's political signs, I don't know if we can, where that's at.
I think you're right, I think it is under.
Yeah, it is under temporary.
What's that number, my, my?
Uh.
Oh, I found it.
I think Farmington had 45.
45 days, yeah.
And then.
Political signs may be displayed or gone up and no permit requirements, and all shall be properly maintained in good condition or removed. Political signs shall not be erected prior to 60 days before the date of a specific election, unless removed, removed no later than 30 days after the election. And then we go on to say that if a candidate is, um, secures a spot in the primary after a, they can go ahead and put them up.
Is that, is that on there?
Huh?
No, we can read it. One of the discussions was once they declare, they should be able to put up a sign. Once you go and you sign up with the clerks, that you're gonna run. And I think that's 60 days before, right?
Before the primary?
30 to 60 to 90 days sometimes, right?
60 days.
Because they're gonna, they're gonna.
After the 60, because it's 60 days that they have before an election, a special election.
And so they're gonna have, March 12th, I think, is the declaration day? So, and the primaries in June, so.
You go May 2, that's 90 days.
So, but I mean, if they declare.
I know one of the comments was, once they declare, they should be able to hang up a political sign, so that might change.
But they could declare, but they could declare, you know, a year ago.
Well, I mean, officially declare to the clerk's office.
Yeah.
I think they want to.
But they have a deadline, they can declare at the clerk's office a year now, but they have a deadline if they're gonna declare.
Deadline date.
Is the deadline 60 days out?
I think so.
So it's March 12th or something like that, so.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, it's, I just looked at it yesterday, uh, March 12th or 15th.
So we guess, I think we just ask again, yeah, because they did say 60 days, I mean.
I think we can just stay with 60 and then.
Yeah, we should stay with.
Because we're not, I mean, what's the chances we're gonna go?
They're the ones that said the 60 days, they didn't like the amount of time to remove them because it was too short of a time.
I mean, that.
That's the important one, when it's over, it's over.
Yeah.
Sometimes they just stay out there, but in all honesty, that, you know, that funny signs, you guys probably get a part of it. You get too far out, your signs get destroyed before, you know, you can post the election, and that's where it counts, right?
In the sweet spot.
30 days before the election, so that 60 days, we'll just leave that. Again, they come back at us with something different, we'll, you know, we'll talk about it, but, um. Yeah, so that, that's different than Farmington, Farmington had that 45 days.
That is different.
And ours was like five days or something is what it said.
I think five, five days after, five days after and.
We did change that.
45 days before, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and a lot of this, I had any questions, you know, what's the enforcement or penalty, and it's like, well, you know, we, especially like, you know, we, we could send a citation to the, to the party or to that person. But what ends up happening is we go out there and just pick them up. It just gives them a good amount of time.
Yeah.
Explain that temporary signs on the special events, why, why the City Lodger's Tax Advisory Board? Why would they be approved then?
For the special.
Other than it being a special event, would that, that's why?
They're the ones who approve special events, that they have to come and get a permit for a special event.
So the lodger, and the lodger's tax board is, is fraily, I mean, they've, they've had a hard time leading a quorum. That's a good question because, but generally, like Dorita said, all the events are coordinated through lodger's tax because a lot of these events ask for lodger tax money for the event, and then they just approve.
You know what, I really almost think we should add the utility office in there because they're the ones that do the permits for all the special events of the park. Like they have to, like for Highland Games, that's a permit through utility, so maybe we should add the utility office.
Any event that uses a park has to get, go through them.
Right.
Because you got the electric department that will, if they need power, general services is always involved because they set up the trash cans and fence on. So that's a good point.
Or even downtown, you have to get a special permit to close off the street.
Well, that comes from the state, being it's had to stay highway.
Yeah, yeah, and the utility offices are kind of a clearinghouse for all that type of stuff. So we, we could remove lodger's tax board and just put utility office.
And put utility office, it's been about 30 years.
And I, you know, I sat through the last lodger's tax, uh, advisory board for these, the tenant games, the Highland Games. And they had their application of what they were gonna do and basically were asking for $3,000 or whatever. And I don't really remember signage as being a big part of their presentation, so it's there.
They know to, they know to come get us money.
Yeah, so I think the utility office is probably the best.
When they register, when they sign up and request funds, they have to specify what they would use the money, and it has to be for marketing their event. So, we only get signage if signage is a part of their marketing plan.
Right, exactly, yeah. And, yeah, and then, you know, you've been to Highland Games and those, and there's signs everywhere, so. But that, that's a good catch, I think we just put utility office out. And they only meet quarterly, and they have a very hard time getting it. In fact, for our economic development advisory board, they've asked us, we just combine them. Because, you know, a lot of times, people go from one board to the next board, meaning it's all kind of the same people sometimes, you know, just combine those two boards.
Lodger's tax, this supposedly meets six times a year. Every other month.
I think they try quarterly, but still.
Anything else you guys have seen and want to talk about? I'll do some cleanup and I'll send you a cleaned up copy, how about?
Okay. I'll be glad it gets us done.
You.
Tell you the truth.
Well, and we'll be changing this again, isn't it, once, once we do Main Street and.
Maybe not in our lifetime.
That's good. I mean, this is the big, the big part, and, uh, anything else is just be kind of adding, yeah, so. But I'm glad we're doing this kind of pieces, in pieces, because it's just too much. And that was my biggest thing with the commissioner, that wanted us to just do it all at once, and we can't, it's just too much. As it is, we're already kind of lost in some of the things that we're changing.
Good job, Dorita.
Yes.
Good job. Thank you guys for your help.
Anybody else have any more questions or comments on the signs? All right, next item. New business, did we have any new business?
You know, I did, we did put this in there, but I, um, did give relates, so we just signed a contract with a company out of Albuquerque called Deck Repair 17. They, they, they're a kind of a highfalutin architect design company. They've designed a lot of schools around the state that, we've been out to Kuyinta, the health facility way out there, they, they did that. The Rust Medical Center in Albuquerque, in Rio Rancho, um, I've, I've used them quite a bit. And so what they're gonna do, and I'll, I'll send this out to you guys so you, you know it, is we contracted with them to do a master plan of our downtown, uh, North Main and our entire metropolitan development area. And you guys know, we just expanded that, right, to include all of the old and bold properties down Hartman, along the river, crossing the money-saving bridges, it's called, through that 20-acre piece that's across from Lakes and Rapper and around North Main. And basically, kind of going through, uh, the backside of Pioneer Street, which encompasses the Chavessis' properties. And then coming back full circle to, to North Main, Raising Sacred. So that, that whole new MR area, also that, that's the third component, if you will. And, uh, I had, in my budget, I had $60,000 for professional services that came right in under that, I'm using that budget for this plan. And we're gonna kick it off here next week, just to, um, to kind of game plan how we do it. It's a four to six-month process. And what it is, is it's, the deliverable is gonna be in this conceptual master plan of building placement, of ancillary roads within North Main, design standards for downtown that includes Main Street as, as a Main Street designation, and what's required under becoming a Main Street designation is these types of design standards and special look and feel, aesthetics, stuff like that. And they're gonna redraft the North Main overlay zone that we currently have, and you guys, you have or haven't seen it, but the North Main overlay zone was kind of rushed, in my opinion, how it was put together, where, you know, you, you look at the North Main, and there's large swaths of land. And the overlay zoning on it includes all of that property where you've got literally 10, 15 acres on each side. And the frontage of that really pertains to the North Main overlay zone for density and kind of commercial strip mall kind of look and feel. It doesn't allow for drive-throughs, there's a whole list of things that it doesn't allow for. Jack's Plastic Welding as a manufacturer technically wasn't allowed in this North Main overlay zone. technically wasn't allowed in this North Main overlay zone, but because they have a retail space, you kind of, you know, fit that in. But it, it really needs a kind of a going over and a separation, which would be the first fifty to seventy-five feet, even up to one hundred and twenty-five feet of the frontage will be a, will be a certain design standard and zone. And then your back property remaining, which could be up to seven hundred feet, because you have literally five acres behind. If you guys visualize North Main, that we want to allow residential apartments and high, high density and that stuff, so. And where that relates is it, is there, there'll be some changes to our zoning because of that, once that's done. So we started this process in October with talking with these guys and doing this, and so it's just now to where we got the contracts done, so. It's amazing how things just, you know, takes so long to materialize. But that's it on, as far as new business. I, I do have, there's a few, there's been a lot of interest, development interest around town. Almost daily, I'm talking with somebody who's interested in either buying up old property or wanting to develop a, a vet clinic, and I mentioned this, Teppecky visited the other day. Much to our surprise, this, this gentleman came in looking for a lot for his, for him and his wife to open a vet clinic. You know, Aztec doesn't have a vet clinic, and so his wife is, is a vet, veterinarian, and would like to open up a shop here. And so we looked at a couple of places that we got to looking at our zoning, and every single zone designation except for one, it's not allowed. We don't allow for vet clinics here, which was really puzzling to me. So only in the ag zone, which is our most problematic zone, right? Where it's like totally non-conforming, is where it's allowed. And so we'll be changing that, and basically just removing it, because, you know, almost any other community, especially the communities I've worked in of this size, where we're an island city, kind of a, you know, in a sea of agriculture, kind of surrounded by agriculture, that should be allowed. In just about every zone except maybe residential, so we're gonna change that. And so they, the good news is, is the individuals found a lot that they, they're gonna pursue, and hopefully that, that comes, that comes around. The Mesa Verde Apartments on, on Mesa Verde between, what is that, Blanco and Lover's Lane? So like, actually Lover's Lane kind of dead end, dead ends to them, is, was under contract and met with the building inspection group from San Juan County, and they, they pulled out, but there's a list of investors wanting to, to purchase that and improve it, so that's really promising. I think that's gonna happen. So those are, in far, as far as two, you know, I don't wanna get into the updates, but those, those are probably, in terms of new business, typically we, we have different items there, but I kind of wrote that in because that relates to some policy change.
The Montian, because they were involved in that zone change.
Which one?
Um, the Iklees with the, the, I think the very first zone change we did, the Montian, he's trying to do the process of upgrading the electrical that was required, that was required. And he's wanting to, instead of just put the panel there, it's shot, that was the thing that was brought up in that zone change. He's wanting to build a little laundry mat for his tenants.
Tenants.
And put the electrical panel on that, so we haven't structured it, but it all.
And a fourplex.
And that's up here.
Mesa Verde.
Mesa Verde and Blanco?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I was just fixing, I was just fixing to ask, you know, I know we'd done the zone change for that, and he was supposed to be working on his flood.
Yep.
The flood plain and building the, the.
Retention pond?
The little retention pond and nothing, and, you know, I was wondering, we dropped the ball on that and letting him skate? How long did he have to, before he had to upgrade that?
He hasn't done it done as quick as he probably was supposed to, but he's been working, so.
Well, there's not, there's not a pond.
Did he, did he pave?
No.
He hasn't paved yet?
He's supposed to pave too.
No, I, I don't think.
Go gravel, gravel.
No, I think it was just gravel plus the.
But he had to make the retention pond.
Retention pond.
Because he had to, he had to deal with all that runoff.
Is there a lot of runoff there?
Retention ponds are.
Yeah.
He's not, he doesn't have much room, but he wants, what he wants to do, but I.
But that was part of the zone change.
It was part of the zone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The retention pond, he's supposed to do the electrical upgrade, and.
He was supposed to do some sewer.
Sewer, yep.
In the sewer?
The electrical was the one I know we put a deadline on, and the other, I wanna say might have been, I'll have to go back and look and find the fact. But the other might have been when he got ready to build an add, because he was gonna add another, now he's talking a fourplex.
Yeah.
Yeah, but at that time, he, when we okayed everything, that wasn't in the original.
Yeah, we talked about gas, sewer.
Well, I don't think the gas, I think the gas was up to snuff, but the sewer and electrical and then the retention pond.
Yeah, the retention pond was the big one, because the, the gas was supposed to go, he was gonna upsize it, right?
Well, I think he was gonna upsize the gas. They were gonna have.
He probably would need to, especially going to split a laundry mat.
Yeah, especially if he wants to do that, but I know one, the retention dam and the sewer and the electrical. Because I think the sewer was undersized for what.
Yes.
The buildings.
When he rebuilt?
Well, he did mention rebuilding at the time.
Yeah, he said it, yeah, he was gonna add.
He was gonna remodel.
It was just remodel, I thought.
Jesus, think it's just go back and look.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, and I just, when I look at the property, it sits pretty high.
But that's the whole issue, though, you know.
He has to do retention a lot of that.
Yes.
Typically, drain the street if there's storm drains in the street, but I guess there's not.
There's not storm drains in the street. That's why the museum gets flooded out every time it rains.
Mm-hmm.
Wow. Okay, yeah, and I.
And that was before you.
Downstream.
So you were a part of that, so.
I just read the, the fact was yesterday, I think he came in and said that he was building a board on, but, but again, there's, there's a lot of, there's the two houses on Lover's Lane that are being built. There's a house in Coca Pella that's, that's just about finished with construction. McWilliams subdivision's getting ready to grow, hopefully. But, but I am, I'm getting, we're getting a lot of, at least interest in, in some development here, so.
Good.
Be nice if in that study and stuff like that, they would find another way for traffic to get across the river. Other than just what we have.
The two bridges? Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, you know, the other thing I'm working on is with the Old and Bold properties, which along the river, we're getting a sixty foot easement there, and then all along this twenty acre piece, another sixty foot easement, so you have another trail on both sides from Riverside and this side. The walkability, but quite honestly, what I brought up, you can, that we need to look at long term is a bridge over five sixteen to link downtown with North Main. Because if it ever does develop on North Main and your downtown is vibrant, it's gonna be very hard for people to walk who are downtown all the way to North Main, vice versa, you know, without crossing that street. But a pedestrian bridge at some point, you know, from there. But another road bridge, I don't know, D O T is, has no interest in, we would have to fund completely ourselves for the Money Saving Bridge to be maintained or continued, you know.
Well, it's gonna, it's gonna happen one of these times that we have something bad on the bridge, and we're not gonna be able to, as far as the safety.
Yeah.
We're not gonna be able to get equipment one way or the other, because we're limited unless we drive all the way around.
Yeah, where would you go through, New Grand or all the way to Floris?
It'd be nice to go North Main.
Yeah. But that's right, we don't have, I mean, that's pretty much the only access, those two, the Money Saving Bridge and, and the Farmington Bridge. These guys, and again, these guys are gonna look at, um, basically a master plan for development of the raw land. And these, these little accident, it's not, they're not gonna do traffic studies, they're not gonna do stuff like that.
Yeah, I understood that. I was just saying, wish.
Yeah. That's it on the new business. We gonna update it?
Yep, let's go to updates unless anybody has any questions. No?
So, I, I can't wait till the East Arterio. We took off McWilliams Road and the Reservoir, but the reservoir is, is out to bid and they're ready, they had a pre-construction conference, that's, the construction's gonna start in the next month or so. Which is to get that reservoir out there redone and online. The East Aztec Arterio, you know, went to Santa Fe with the city manager last week or two weeks ago for a Main Street conference, but we also went to see our legislators and begged for money. And Senator Neville specifically, when we sat down with him, said that, you know, he, he actually was said, I'm glad that East Arterio's done and you guys are finally going to bid, and we said, no, the bid's not, we're not, still, we still haven't received the final okay from NMDOT to, to, to go out to bid. And so he was surprised with that, because he's really been kind of pushing that long, you know. It's like every meeting for the last, since I've been here, I've talked about this, how we're just waiting on DOT, waiting on DOT. And then we get, what they say, we need to get to them, and then we're waiting again, and there's like another list, so. So we, we're incrementally getting there, and the last word was, they're doing their final review of funding and they're gonna supposed to release the okay for us to go out to bid. That's the, the last word, but we're still waiting, so. And that, I mean, this was supposed to go out to bid in October, and then prior to that was March of last year. We're still, we're still dealing with that. Um, McWilliams Road, they, they've gone, they got a, uh, went out to bid, they got a, a bid on that, which is Four Corners Materials. But here again, unfortunately, that funding is dependent on NMDOT. The awarding of that bid was supposed to be this last Tuesday meeting, and it was put off because we don't have that okay from the Department of Transportation yet, so we're waiting for that. And so once we get that, then the approval for the commission will be the twenty-seventh of this month, the next meeting. And then, and then that will be done, and we'll be off to pre-construction conference and, and getting that hopefully started. We still have some time because the plant probably won't open until April, but we're looking at the April timeframe for them to, to start work on that, so. I know East, East Arterio's only mentioned, but I want, you know, those three projects have been hot, and we're just, the only one that's actually happening is the rest. So with the legislative session, we did get money, we got about two and a half million dollars for a ladder tank on South Main that feeds Bison Trail and those folks down there. We have twelve million that we're asking for to redo the trunk line between Bloomfield and Aztec, that twelve inch main water line. We came up short on that because the preliminary engineering report that we need to assess the exact cost of that is not done. And where we were guesstimating at twelve million, but the last meeting we had, it put the price on up to seventeen to twenty million.
I misunderstood that. I thought it was from, from the tank into town, not from the tank to Bloomfield.
It's actually from Blanco to Bloomfield, is, is the water line, and the section from Blanco up to, almost to the tank is actually the best, in better shape than the rest of it. And then the ladder tank came out because the EPA came out and saw the condition of that ladder tank, which is terrible. And they, we kind of got cited for that. And so that became a priority on anything, and they kind of carved that out, and that's where, it's probably gonna be over three million to replace it, but we got two and a half million to, to work on that. And then the fire suppression and water lines going into Lobo and Bison Trail and Coyle Run and those that are two inch now, that they have no water pressure. We have a moratorium on growth in those areas, which is really tough, or, you know, especially in my position, that's trying to promote growth. When you tell them you can't, you can't build out there. So that's a whole, that's a part of the overall engineering report. But that's not included in that seventeen to twenty million, that's just for that truck line. So when you add them all together, it's over thirty million dollars of stuff to do. And right now, we got two and a half million just for the ladder tanks, so. And that's really what the legislators could, could, you know, le, leverage for us when they've got Bloomfield, Farmington, the county to, to consider. We did visit with the governor's office and we, we asked for money for the Outfall Recreation Manufacturing Facility by November. Just build that facility out and then use, you know, Jax Plastic as a lead candidate, or we're talking with the schools about doing something that could be the tenants in there on that. But we have, I think today is last day of session, so we're actually waiting to see what we're gonna find out. And that's it. The only other thing too is that we got Dustin and we started this with Erica to do a sign inventory around town of all the different signs we have that are pretty much not in use or, uh, dilapidated or whatever, and and he's, he's, he's completed that, and the initial step is gonna be to take care of the city signs, because most of those signs that he came up with were city signs that need to be redone, like heart in the parks with the gad, there's all over town. So we had about forty-six hundred dollars left over from another fund that we put into, to fund this, and we're starting on that. For city signs, and then for the rest, we're just gonna kind of reach out to these property owners and say, you know, are you finally to use these signs? You know, these brackets or whatever has signs again, above the staff services, you know, that's a billboard frame, it's huge, that.
That's been there since the ripaway days.
Yeah, and I don't, you know, and I don't wanna get into, because some of the people in the community would feel like that's kind of a landmark and it's historic, whatever, and but on the other hand, if it comes down, you know, that way someone else doesn't come by and say, well, can I use that as a billboard?
Actually, I already asked them and they told me no, for pioneer heights.
As a billboard?
Yeah, we thought, I mean, you had to attract people from Drango to.
Yeah.
And, but they said no, they needed, they needed their accounting services advertised there.
Yeah, so, and it is really, um, some of these places have signs that just haven't been used in years, they come down, so, so we're working on that. And that's it. You guys have any questions or anything for me?
Questions? No, no, I think we're good, thank you. I think that is it. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
On the favor? All right. Leading has adjourned, thank you.
I know.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can't, I'll hold it.
I might just bring my old.
Doesn't matter.
I don't know what I did.
Doesn't matter, we're just like.
They moved it up.
He's not responding to us. He's not responding to us, why?
I heard you tell me, Rita, you did this, the, you have a, Miss Bell here and that sign code, yeah.
I didn't read the sign code that, I did, I did read it, but I didn't, I wasn't looking for that, because I know, because I know we had another shot at it, you know?
Yeah.
I was trying to make sense of it, make, I wanted to make sure I was making sense, so.
Hey there, man.
How are you?
Thank you, sir.
Don't worry.
Thank you.
See you soon, man.
Well, they're not on my mind, I'm thinking that picks up. Oh, no.
Well, we were trying to get quorum that day, so Teppecky was able to, we were able to call her.
Oh, okay. I didn't even think so. The D O T is already skeptical that it's gonna be ninety.
Okay, we got it.
So then we get into, to March, and then the mayor's already set up a special meeting. Once we do get the.
Training.
So. I think it's okay. You just hope it isn't going.
I think it's so, yeah, you just hope it isn't going for the, It's a board basics, some with a college, or some group at the college.
Well, we're even asking attorney, we could just move forward, 'cause it's really been a checks and ounces on there.
I mean, my wife, so, her wife goes through, she kind of drove me to,
We're waiting for them to let us know we can spend our own money.
And she's getting more out of it, she's not a different kind of board, but, yeah, I'm just kind of seeing her, like, this doesn't really seem the same.
I mean, we get two hundred fifty thousand for Bison, it's a ballpark on North Main.
They're on boards, so I would have assumed that's the majority of the board.
And that was, it's been two months now.
We would kind of move forward.
And that, we would spend the two hundred fifty thousand, and they're not gonna give us the paper for that, in two or four bases.
So you should know, just being good.
It's never been this slow, it's always been slow, it's never been this, you know, so. It's frustrating, yeah. Especially in a state that doesn't, you know, like, you're right.
I mean, she had that, she had all that listed out, but didn't really cover it, so.
You know, it's free to get yourself.
Yeah, kind of, well, you know, as soon as I hear, I'll just know.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah, 'cause I was gonna do that.
And I'm sure it works.
I was like, oh, cool. And it was barely even talked about.
I mean, we have an attorney specifically, some of these projects, to push them along, you know, we, yeah, so, it's like, you don't know.
See, next week, Senator Henry Bell.
How, how long does he see at least?
It's just three weeks, it's three days, it's like, three,
Yeah.
Two days, yeah, two days, so, okay. Not really, but.
I'm assuming if you're not getting anything out of it.
Yeah, just to see who that might be.
At the most, we can just see, because it's a lot of,
Next week, we're done.
Yeah.
Move on.
Move on from there.
We'll see you. Thank you, sir.
Alright, sir.
Alright, we'll see ya.
Alrighty.
See you next time.
Alright, sounds good to me.
Well,
See ya, thanks.
Let's see you.
Good meeting you.
Nice meeting you. Well, and then in an open, public meeting, they went too far on, on making a known, they were having a, and so, uh, I think SciCar's gotten over it, their feelings were hurt, but they cried all the way to the bank, 'cause they, they got a lot of projects, and they would need some pretty good coin on them, you know. So, but SciCar, in terms of the reservoir, was the lowest bidder, and then, uh, there was a company out of Albuquerque and a company out of Denver, and the company out of Denver was six hundred thousand, it's just for mobile nation. And that's through their mountain, you know. Which I don't understand, I mean, they, they can, you know, locate their key people here and rent the equipment, you're not gonna haul concrete from Denver, so I, Yeah.
They can't do it, you know, with, with the, they didn't trust them.
Ken George was like, "I wanna know if these guys have ever built a pump before," it's like, it's not rocket science, you know? And it's already done, they're just doing concrete, and they're actually known for the concrete. So I, you know, I don't know, he was kind of heavy on that, and it's like, I could see we, they're gonna build a building, and they never built a building before, that could be an issue, you know, but, you know, they, it's ninety percent concrete that they're, they're doing. And these guys are pretty big concrete guys, so, but yeah, and then our city attorney, with his comments, just, you know, were right.
They actually sit on the asphalt, right? They're just kind of, you know.
Yeah. And I don't know if SciCar did that. The chip seal? No, it wasn't, in fact, they had a presentation on that, and they, they hired an engineer, and paid money to get some of the, an independent engineer, independent,
How's that, doctor?
Doctor, but that guy does a lot of work for everybody around here, so he wasn't really independent. And sure to go, he, it was, he met the standard, they just did a sweep. And he, and he's had some good points for it, they should have, because once they laid that down, and they drew the street, and then just take all the excess out, that stuff is dead, and they didn't do that. And then we had snow, and rain, and it turned up less, kind of, and then, and now they come through the sweepers, and it's awful. Two hundred fifty grand.
You want your water? You wanna take it with you? No, no worries.
And, and like our public worst director had a good argument, it's like, "Well, we could have paid one road for two hundred fifty thousand, or we chip sealed seven," you know, and that wouldn't be bad. So, and, and the engineer said, "We got the paperwork, you know, this is a band-aid." Some of these roads just need to be completely done, but yeah, that was another contentious issue, so. But yeah, for the most part, SciCar's, they've done a lot of work for us, and, so I, I don't know, I mean, well, I think they're over it now.
Okay.
'Cause the local, that's one of the biggest states. And maybe they'll produce those thousands of ponds, but, yeah, it's, and they're subbing out to TRC, that's, they're getting bigger, they're doing a lot more for us, so.
Howdy, howdy, got pissed off? I mean, they're recording your, uh, off the record.
What's your?
Hi, sir.
See you, man.
Oh, man.